Our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move us to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. Lord, this is to be generous in listening to others' opinions so we may understand other points of view. And we ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the minutes of previous council meetings, council meeting, March 26th, 24, and the work session of April 9th, 24. And if there are no corrections, minutes would stand approved. Public presentation by our local library representative.
Good evening. How are you guys tonight?
Good evening.
Just wanted to come and tell you some of the other fun stuff that we have going on, of course, at the Green Hills Library. We continue to offer free printing at all of our locations, and that's 20 color copies or 33 black and white copies. And that's available across all of our locations, but also you can do a combination of if you need to print a few, make a few copies. Also, faxing and scanning to email are free and always have been free, as many pages as you want. So we can help you with that at any point. We are also going to be having a tech session on how to use the library's ebook providers and Canopy, one of our streaming services. This is going to be on Tuesday, May 21st, from 5:00 to 6:00. And sign up in case you would like to reserve your spot. If that time doesn't work for you, just give us a buzz, 513-369-4441. We'll set up a time that works for you. Summer reading is coming. The popular program will return on June 1st for youth 0 to 18 years of age. Summer is a time when youth have the freedom to discover new things. Summer reading at CHPL seeks to help youth grow by connecting them with new opportunities and experiences for minds of all kinds. So it'll be back, and the freedom and flexibility of summer provides that unique opportunity for young people to take charge of their own adventure with curiosity as their guide. And we have been working hard to help kids, teens, and families embrace all of those opportunities the library has through our summer reading program. A few other fun things that'll be happening in May before we get to the summer reading. We're going to be having a money talk, which is a workshop with a HUD-certified financial counselor that covers money trauma and why we spend money the way we do. And they'll learn how to recognize money-spending habits and change them for the better. This workshop will also go over the different types of credit cards and loans, APR, what goes into a credit score, and the effects of a poor credit score. And they will also discuss predatory lending and how to recognize it, as well as common scams and how to avoid them. And they're endlessly creative on how they manage that. And there will be a Q&amp;A session, and it's offered in partnership with the Brighton Center. And then we're going to be having fun with drums for kids on Tuesday, May 7th, at 4:30 PM. And drums can talk, and they also teach. School aid will teach children in grades 3 to 5 how to play a drum along with music using rhythmic games. They will have fun exploring music terms, mathematical concepts, and rhythmic notation. Registration is required. Please register each child that will be in attendance, and you can go online to do that at chpl.org. We are also going to be having duct tape roses for teens. They can come and create flowers that will never fade. That will be on Thursday, May 9th, at 4:00 PM. All of you plant people, we are going to be having a plant swap on Saturday, May 11th, at noon, one of several that the library is having across different locations and different times. And bring any new seeds, cuttings, or plants to share with your neighbors, and in exchange, find something new to take home. Please include as much information as possible with anything you bring to share. This is a drop-in event, so all expertise levels are welcome. And if you kill things like me, you can still come and find something that maybe you haven't tried before. You can talk plants with your neighbors, find something new, and stay for as long as or short a time as you would like. It's also just after our Romance Readers Book Club. It's at 11:00 AM. So if you are interested in more than one thing, come for the book club, stay for the plant swap. And then we're also going to be having, we have a wealth of resources if you are into gardening, if you want that village beautification award possibly. The library has books on gardening, landscaping, houseplants. We also have access to a number of resources online, including something called Universal Class, which is a self-paced thing where you can learn about all kinds of different topics, including how to design landscapes or how to keep your described plant alive. So a lot of that will be coming up, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Jennifer for the tremendous job that she does for the people, the citizens of Green Hills. It's always three, four, five things that you are sharing with us, and it doesn't matter. It covers all ages, like the drums, and then you have for senior citizens, the novels, the reading, the old-fashioned movies. So borrow from the library, I really appreciate it. Hats off to you for all the work that you do.
Well, thank you, and thanks to our community for being such large supporters of us so we can offer all of these things for minds of all kinds and all ages.
We appreciate the library.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the public hearing, second hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2024 to 2026.
Apparently, the wrong date is listed on the Waycross programming right now. The screen has the wrong date.
Today's date?
As we're airing right now. So yes, today's April 23rd, 2024. Hopefully, that will be fixed shortly.
Corrected, yeah.
Should I?
Is there somebody out there?
Should we stick our head out and let them know?
Yeah.
Tree forehead.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the second public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program. Our first was at our previous council meeting, the March 26th, where I just gave an overview of the program. We have not received any comments from the citizens, but I at that time had suggested or inferred that I would be preparing, which I have prepared, a project request for funding for the park so we can complete the park path. So that is the purpose of this hearing, is to provide my recommendation for the application afterwards, and I would want the minutes to reflect this. We must give our citizens, after they hear what I have to say, 72 hours to respond, and then it all gets submitted next week, April 30th is the deadline for this. Again, I am using the park. It just so happens that our low-to-moderate, okay, so there are census tracts. There used to be blocks within census tracts, but that apparently has all changed. However, we can still reference that because we have one area that would actually qualify for low mod, so that's our justification for the project. And the entire golf, old golf course actually is within that site, so it works really well to serve that community, that portion of the community. And again, it's basically to put the entire loop pathway around. That's the whole goal. Fifty thousand from them. We have fifty thousand in recreation that we've been waiting to get matching money to put it together and get that done. So that's the purpose, that's the funding that I'm working on. If council has any other suggestions, projects, or if the citizens have comments, they have a few days to get some things in, comment and send, and we'll revise or submit accordingly.
I've got a few things for you. I got...
Wait, this is the public hearing part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't be looking forward to it.
Am I able to ask a question now? So is that what the estimated cost is going to be a hundred thousand to finish the path?
Yes.
Is that the last thing that's on the list for the park, or is there more after that?
No, there's more after that, but it's more amenities that we'd be adding. Council has felt the past at least that the completion of that path all the way around is pretty critical. People go over there right now and try to use it, and it's only partially there. So it'll be great to get that in there, and then we'll basically be building around that. It's designed to go around what we hope will eventually be a pond, and just other amenities built into there. It's like a good first step.
Moving on, reports of municipal officials, municipal manager, Ron Kovach.
Okay, so I do just want, I know that the, with the road improvements for Ingram and Farragut, they've already started doing surveying work, and there'll be marking utilities. If you're seeing that go on, that does have to do with the road improvements that we hope to bid out mid to late May and start June, July at the latest on that big project. We're excited about it. Those roads are really in bad shape, so that should be pretty nice when that is completed. Pool memberships are available right now for purchase, so I mean, mind you're there to get your memberships in, although we do have daily rates, so pick your, make your choice there. And then we have our first community yard sale on June 1st, and we're excited about that because this year our residents wanted to have two, so we're going to have two, one in June and one in September. That's all for now.
Okay, now.
Now.
All right. I have the Tree City USA plaque. I got this for you. That was our centerpiece, and I asked one for you. This is the whole, the newspaper, the upcoming events that they have there. We had the program and the regular newspaper for them, and the native plants, what they are enforcing because of the needs when you plant native plants. It's the fauna gets feeded by that. And a particular tree may be well-known here, and the same conditions in another place will not do the same. So they were encouraging that. Also, there was some kind of expenditure money that was given, and nine million dollars, five million of them has already been distributed, but that is to populate with trees, different areas, for the same thing that you have been preaching all the time, the change in temperature when you arrive into Green Hills, opposite to the heat, they have cleaner air and so forth. And it's called the Equalizer Grant, also to root up or to speed up parks that need help. And I thought maybe perhaps our pocket parks could use some help, and I mentioned that to them. But you have to reach out to that particular Equalizer Grant for that. We have, I want to thank you personally for the work that you did putting it together, Neil White and me for the donation of the trees. And he also asked me when would it be a tree commission meeting. I told him, I took the liberty to say, to call you. And then I would like to be attending that because I might want to donate some other trees after. They gave me also a list of the Tree City USA flowering trees that would be really appropriate for the Winton Road corridor. I also wanted to bring up an encounter, I guess, that I experienced with Rita. I had processed all my taxes. I had sent all my payments. I had the tracking number for everything, and the federal arrived two days. At the third day, the money was out of the account. The state was the same. Rita wasn't out. So I called them today, and I said that I was concerned because I mailed all three at the same time. I talked to a lady, the name was Pamela. She said, "Not to fret about it because they are not, sometimes they're not able to process for eight weeks." And I said, "Well, for eight weeks, my check may just not be honored at the bank." I'm really perturbed about this because I paid the estimate, not of the quarter, but the whole year. So I gave her the number of the check. I gave her everything else for her to investigate any further because I have a proof of when I mail it, but if that's going to be eight weeks later, I don't want to be caught in a penalty situation. So I just wanted to make, you know, to make you aware of that. And that was this morning at quarter to nine that I talked to somebody there. Was very polite and very knowledgeable, you know, and I put a report also that she was very helpful, the information that she gave me. But I don't think it's going to let me sleep better knowing that there is a check somewhere, and I don't know if the right hands have it. Well, it gets somewhere to a processing center, and that processing center is not, I get up to speed with whatever, or maybe they have some difficulties to process the amount thereof. But I just wanted to let you know that that was my question this morning, and that was the answer. So I don't know if our treasurer, whatever, if she can find anything further about it, I don't know.
Okay. Great. Okay. All right. Moving on, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. No pending legal matters and nothing else to report on tonight.
Public counsel, Teresa Lawley.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Chief of police, Jim Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, the 2023 Annual Report was released. It's online on the website that you can click on and see the report, so hopefully you got a chance to read that. If not, it's available there. All the officers attended a below 100 class. What below 100 is, is it's a national initiative that was created a while ago trying to get the number of law enforcement on-duty deaths under 100. So we have not been there since 1943. So it's a good reminder for everybody. It's a four-hour session. It's a lot of stuff. We know where your seat fell, watch your speed, wear your vest, don't get complacent and so forth. So it was a good reminder for everybody. Forest Park hosted it and invited us, so we always naturally appreciate them and their partnership. Last week also, you might have seen in the newsletter, was Telecommunicator Week. So I sent a letter that you saw to the dispatchers of Hamilton County Com Center. They're truly our lifeline, and I know police, also fire appreciates everything they do. I don't think until you sit there and you see what they do, you realize the stress that they're under. But they truly are our eyes and ears, and we appreciate that. Summer is quickly approaching. Hard to believe May is right around the corner, and then June. Want to remind everybody, and if you didn't know, our vacation listing online, that you can go online, submit a vacation listing. That way, the officers know that you're out of town. The officers on day shift will walk around, make sure the residence is okay and everything's secure. Also, don't forget about our open house coming up a week from Saturday, May 4th, up here. Police and fire, it'll be a good time. It's from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. So bring the kids out and get to see the equipment and talk to officers, and we look forward to that. March crime stats. We were, in the month of March, we responded to 173 incidents in the village. We had made six criminal arrests, five arrests for warrants. We assisted 18 mutual aid calls for surrounding jurisdictions, responded to 25 life squad runs. We issued 35 traffic citations and issued 25, 26 warnings, sorry. We investigated seven auto accident reports during the month of March. We took 15 criminal offense reports during the month of March. Just in comparison, last year, during the month of March, we had 16, so we were down one for the month of March compared to last year. Overall, year-to-date, we've had 49 criminal offense reports that we've taken since January 1st, and that compares to 57 during the same timeframe, 2021. So I have, unless you have any questions.
Chief, I do have a question. Well, first and all, a statement on the vacation check. I gave my email address, my regular one, my personal one, and I would get reports back for that.
Correct.
So if they provide you with the email, that would be a piece of mine also because you're getting reports on when you were checked there, et cetera. So that's a really nice piece of the puzzle.
Exactly.
Second, speed and stop signs. There's only so much, so many humans can do, but it seems that it's a continuous speed ramp, rave, or whatever on Damon. And I noticed that obviously because I use that in and out as much often as anybody else on the residence. I'm coming really early to the meetings here because I still have the same problem that if we're going to make a left turn to Winton to come here to the meeting, I have to wait three or four arrows, green arrows, because going in Winton never stops on the red. So I come in early here, about 15, 20 minutes early, just to be safe because one time it was too close for comfort. I also, I don't know what the situation is with the stop signs, but one observation now because I'm more outside, it's not winter, maybe one, two people do stop and they look very carefully, and I almost have to tempt to say, tempted to say, that it's because they got a ticket, so they are watchful of that stop. Otherwise, it's just like a parkway somewhere of a race car, and some of them end up in accidents. And Damon has been one of them that has been hit several times with that.
We had two in the month of March.
Yeah, correct. So...
Drinking and driving, too.
Well, that doesn't...
Doesn't help the matters.
Doesn't help matters, but the speed, sometimes I'm concerned because this is the time when kids are out, playing out, maybe with a bicycle, maybe playing ball. I don't know. I'm concerned with that.
And actually, today I was looking at the numbers for streets, not just Winton, but outside of Winton Road, which Winton, as you know, is our high traffic volume. So we're going to have a lot of, lot of stuff happening on Winton, or trying to prevent it, so you'll see presence. But we had a lot of activity within the last month on Damon.
Yes.
As far as enforcement, stop signs and stuff.
I've seen it. I have seen it, yes.
Hopefully, you've noticed that.
I have noticed that, yes.
And there's other places in the village we're going to try to hit a little harder.
And another thing that I just happen to know because I know this particular people that have the misfortune, but it seems like we have some conflicts with people, and some of them, some of our residents have been beaten and so forth. I'm concerned with that as well. So I just thought I'd just chime on that. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And it's a universal problem.
Oh, yeah.
Stop signs, red lights, they're just...
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, red lights. I encourage everybody to sit there for a second or two.
Thousand one, thousand two, thousand three. That's it.
Okay, mayor's report. I have mayor's court numbers for ending of, end of March. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, $2,477.48, $90 to Hamilton County, and $9,475.94 to the Village of Green Hills. Also, I guess we probably ought to check about Rita. Rita sounds like if they're processing slow, they're doing it just like the county and taking forever to get our money that people paid in January to us.
They just got some from the county, so yeah, it took a while. And that's within advance.
Yeah.
You have no permission to use my name because I left my name and I left the address and everything. Okay.
Okay, reports committees in our government affairs, laws and rules. Maria Walther.
We haven't met yet. We're trying to combine the finance together with the laws and rules, and we haven't had one yet.
Finance it on it. Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, at your place tonight is the general fund recap for the month of March, since April's not, not complete yet. You'll notice in the income tax shows that monthly increase trends are continuing, which are a good thing. But while slow reporting for real estate taxes, it has overall revenues static year to year, and that apparently will adjust a little bit now that they've sent the money. General fund balance at the end of March was $2,210,885.1. On the expense side of the ledger, the expense side are showing no new transfers from the general fund to any individual appropriated account. And overall, the expenses are as planned towards appropriations for the year. And again, there are no new transfers from the, from the general fund in this month and none anticipated. Unless you have any questions, feel free. That's the end of my report.
Community development, Jim Burrow.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee met last week, and the main item that we would just mention tonight is, as the beautification award announcement's gone up to the Green Hills Journal website, and, you know, we'll be reviewing the village next couple of weeks, the last couple of weeks in May. And the winner of the award will be announced at the June council meeting. So that's the main item for today.
And I need to get you the signs.
Oh, the yard signs.
Thank you. Safety, Jeff Fulter.
We did not meet, so I do not have a report at this time.
Recreation cable television, Rachel Hudson, and maybe clerk may note that Rachel is here.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a joint meeting, like my counterpart said, on the 16th for about an hour, and one of the main things that we talked about were upcoming dates and, of course, the park project. We did want to let everyone know that we decided to do a rain date for the first community yard sale, just in case we get rained out. So if we do get rained out on June 1st, then it'll be the following weekend on June 8th. And I also wanted to give a thank you to a past resident who grew up here, Annie Siegel. Did I say her last name right? Who decided that she wanted to take time out of her busy schedule over in sunny California and come back here and try and film a documentary on Green Hills, and she's going to try and get that published. And she actually, bless her heart, because to me, it's the thought that counts, but if she is able to produce anything from that, then she would like for some of the monies to come back and go into the community. So I just wanted to formally say thank you and acknowledge her. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Citrus and Streets, Melanie Hermes.
We met today at 6:00 PM. We met for about 50 minutes. Basically, I just wanted to get kind of a big scope of what the committee was doing an overview of. The things worth noting today were for sidewalks, precision cutting is going to be coming back to, hopefully to do checkout for, they're the ones that did the shaving of the sidewalks. So for something like that, they would also, anything that's too big also has to be marked, but we would have to, we need to find a contractor that would be willing to replace a whole sidewalk instead of just the shaving. That's a little bit harder for us to find because there's not a lot of bang for their buck when there's just one or two on a street, so they kind of like to try and do it in conjunction with something else. So we, we kind of discussed that, and one of the things we did talk about was the infrastructure grant that is for, that Avon mentioned for Farragut from Enfield to all of Ingram, maybe having a way for them to use, use that project to... Maybe having a way for them to use, use that project to possibly also bid on some of the sidewalk stuff because then it's, they're already in the area and they already have the stuff. So just trying to figure out ways to get the sidewalks taken care of. And hopefully, since we did have the five phases of the cutting done previously, we'll have fewer that need to be cut now. I know that's one of those things that if we keep it up every year, we'll hopefully have a little bit more smooth sailing as we're walking our dogs or ourselves, especially after dark. So mentioning the infrastructure grant, that is an $850,000 project, and the grant covers 75%. So that's a good coverage. And then we also talked about just the assessment for the trees will be going on in May, starting that process. So there's a lot of stuff in streets and services, and if you have any thoughts, please let us know. You can send it to my Green Hills email address, but I'm hoping just to meet periodically and trying to get more of a handle on this. So, thank you.
Okay. Great. And this would be the opportunity for residents, non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. And we don't have any legislation on the agenda, so we'll skip over that. I do have a proclamation that's sort of here that I may as well go ahead and read. It's related to Arbor Day. And whereas trees and urban forests are an important component of the village's infrastructure, whereas trees and the urban forest have been shown to reduce crime, vandalism, domestic violence, as well as vehicular speed, and therefore are important components to our village's safety and mission. Maybe we should plant more trees around stop signs or something.
Well, I'm doing my part.
Whereas trees in the urban forest reduce stormwater runoff, water pollution, and therefore are important resources to our village service mission. Whereas trees in the urban forest reduce the symptoms of ADD and ADHD and improve the concentration of school-aged children, allowing them to perform better in school and make better life choices, and therefore are valuable assets for our schools and educators teaching our next generation. Whereas trees in the urban forest reduce air conditioning and heating costs for residents and therefore make our community more livable, save our residents' money, and reduce our needs for foreign energy. Whereas trees and urban forests make our neighborhoods more inviting and attractive and cause new home buyers to want to live in a community and be willing to pay more for a house in our community and therefore are a foundation stone of our village's community development efforts. Whereas trees in the urban forest attract shoppers and businesses, inspire shoppers to visit more frequently, stay longer, and spend more money, and therefore are an important component of our village economic development mission. Whereas trees and urban forests reduce stress and human mortality from cardiac and lower respiratory illnesses, and therefore are critical to the health of our citizens. Although sometimes in the spring, you might wonder if all that pollen is contributing.
I didn't see that on the proclamation.
Right, yes. Now, therefore, I, David Moore, Mayor of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, do proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the Village of Green Hills, and urge all residents to support efforts to protect and nurture our trees, urban forests, not just for the beauty that they provide, but for the benefits they give our residents and communities. Okay. That's it. All right. We have any council comments that anybody wants to add? The municipal calendar?
I have something I need to add.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay? I wanted to draw everybody's attention to the fact that this past weekend, we had a group of volunteers, mostly from the Springdale Nazarene Church, and some students and faculty from our K-6 school, who refurbished about a dozen of our benches. So we had a beautiful day to be working on that. Steve Denny coordinated that, and that was extremely nice. So big thanks to Springdale Nazarene and those who volunteer.
I also want to announce that for Memorial Day, the American Legion is going to have the service at 11 o'clock.
Okay, on the comments?
On the comments, correct. And I also went on April the 13th to the Hamilton County Municipal League. And the, there are our representatives from Columbus, both from the Senate and from the House, were there. And so others also from Hamilton County were there. And it seems like some of the general conversation was around the marijuana situation and how there, some of the communities are preparing a map to see exactly where, if any, of the place would be a place for it. So they would have already identified that.
Did any of the legislators have an indication of when they may come up with something?
Uh, no. The closest to that was January. Wait here. I didn't say that either.
Okay. All right. This is an opportunity for residents, non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission, and I don't see any non-residents out there. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills, and state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Everybody get a copy?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Over the past several, oh, Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. Over the past several months at council meetings, I have provided you with copies of letters written by Ohio lawmakers to the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, asking the agency to update the radio frequency wireless radiation guidelines. These letters were written by P. Scott Lips, Adam Matthews, Steve Wilson, and our state Senator Louis Blessing. Recently, our state representative Cindy Abrams also sent a letter. I've provided you all with copies, and I'm now going to read it out loud. Dear Secretary Dorch, I am writing to you today to call attention to an alarming issue brought to me by several residents of the 29th Ohio House District. These constituents expressed concerns that the FCC agency rules and regulations for radio frequency emissions need to be updated. My constituents highlight that the human exposure limits for radio frequency have remained unchanged since 1996. Furthermore, there is great apprehension regarding the proliferation of cell towers and the associated levels of electromagnetic field exposure in Hamilton County, Ohio. I urge you to take these concerns into consideration when reviewing and revising the current regulations. It is crucial to prioritize the well-being and safety of the residents in District 29. Thank you for your attention on this matter. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office at your earliest convenience. Sincerely, Cindy Abrams, State Representative, 29th House, Ohio House District. As you know, at past meetings, I have also given you reports about widespread opposition to HR 3557, the American Broadband Deployment Act, and other federal bills that eliminate municipal authority over cell tower installation. I've also asked you to contact our lawmakers about these bills. Opposition to HR 3557 includes the U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and National League of Counties. If these bills are passed and Green Hills no longer has authority over cell tower and wireless deployment, this could significantly affect the village's income, historical status, property values, safety, and security. I know you've heard me say this several times already. Despite my providing you with information and asking you to contact our lawmakers, it is still unclear to me how many of you have. I don't recall there ever being any discussion at council meetings about my comments or requests to contact our lawmakers about these bills. Jennifer Osmone-Glue is the only one who told me that she contacted Warren Davidson about HR 3557. Other Green Hills residents and I have already contacted our lawmakers, Sherrod Brown, Warren Davidson, and J.D. Vance, about these bills. I have been on conference calls with their staff members, as well as with the staff member from the Congressman Greg Lansman's office. Council members from Merrimont were also on the call with Lansman's office because they are concerned about losing municipal authority over the installation of cell towers. I ask again that you contact our lawmakers about HR 3557 and these other bills. I also ask again that you strengthen the village's small cell wireless ordinance so it's as protective as ordinances already passed by other Ohio municipalities. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, meeting adjourned.